Half a day. The Committee. Half a day. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, June 29, 2022. The time is 9:03 a.m. Once again, the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing is now called to order. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, June 20, 2022, five working days prior with the change 1 and 2 on Tuesday, June 21, 2022, and change 3 on Wednesday, June 22, 2022, and again on Monday, June 27, 2022, 48-hour notice. Again, today is Wednesday, June 29, 2022. The following items will be heard for this morning's public hearing. Bill number 290-36 LS introduced by Senator James C. Moynihan, an act to add a new section 26203-K39, 26201A, B, C, D, and E to Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to a temporary exemption of business privilege taxes on the amounts received from the retail sales of liquid fuel and to mandate a visible business privilege tax on gross receipts of liquid fuel transactions. A fiscal note for Bill number 290-36 LS was requested on April 11 of 2022. It was received and disseminated to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on April 20, 2022. Those testifying on behalf of Bill number 290-36 LS are invited to the panel. Reminder of the general rules for public hearing, the conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide the legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and may be asked to leave or be escorted and be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and title for the record. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who have joined us this morning, Speaker Therese Terlaughie, Senator James Moynihan, and Senator Talat Tadegui. At this time, I'll call upon the primary sponsor of the measure, Senator James Moynihan, to provide his opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleagues, for your attendance, and thank you for the representatives here on the panel to discuss Bill 290-36. Mr. Chairman, as we're aware, we just completed this month another bill that passed into law that the governor approved of in order to reduce some of the expenses that we have control of regarding the taxes, and that will be the liquid fuel tax, where we are saving a percentage off that per gallon. Our emphasis was to see what we can do to help the people of Guam by reducing the cost of fuel, and the other part is the BBT tax on this, which is the 5% again that is being taxed on the people when they go to the pumps and pump their fuel. We're looking at this measure as additional help, and as the bill states, it's relatively just, it's a temporary exemption to the BBT, and what the bill is looking at is a two-year period from the date of enactment. And some of our concerns and what this bill addresses as well is to ensure that this is visible for the people to, for citizens to understand that this cost savings is being passed on to the consumers. And the bill also addresses that, that it would be reflected in the receipt for the consumers to see that the cost savings is passed on. The 5% will affect, as the gas prices hopefully go down, that 5% is adjusted per gallon. If the gas prices go up, that 5% is adjusted per gallon. So the objective of this bill, working with the administration, is to find other ways that we can help our public as we clear this pandemic and get back to work, is help the public afford the gasoline to move forward and to do our responsibilities and get things going again. So just another pocketbook-saving idea that I'm hoping we have some good discussion on. And I thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. At this time, we'll accept testimony from those who have signed in to provide oral testimony this morning. We'll go in order of how you signed in on the sign-in sheet. First on the sign-in sheet is Jaden Rose Bloss.
Good morning, Senator Rogel, Speaker Terlaughie, my youth summer job host, Senator Moynihan, and the 36 Guam Legislature. My name is Jaden Rose. I am 14, and I just had graduated at Agatha Johnson. I am an incoming freshman with T's in high school. Clearly, I am unable to drive. However, I face challenges with gas prices. Gas prices has truly affected my family, and it's awful, with having to go to the gas station almost every week, every other week too, if not sooner. It gets frustrating with always having to worry about something like that. My nana, who is often my ride, speaks of how hard it is to get us up with these prices. I have, I no longer have the opportunity I used to, to hang out with other family members or taking our occasional family straw. When there are many more important accessories needed, but instead, we had to worry about how much fuel that would be left with by the end of the week. We cancel and contemplate if we should leave the house or not, which is ironic, because we spend more when we leave and feel, but we spend more when we stay home in utilities. Even more now, my family has had to sincerely think about how much gas is used just to go to work. My sisters and I have to go to summer camp and my youth summer job. These are now more priority trips than any other. My nana takes advantage of any discount coupons as she can, just so she doesn't spend over $100 on something that doesn't feed the family. They would much rather spend money on something more valuable and more impactful for us as a household, like food, clothing, which is hard because we are a household of mostly girls. There is not much freedom for us to go out and just have fun, because everyone's eyes are always looking at the amount of gasoline. I am here today in support of Bill 290-36 authored by Senator Moynihan, because any help my nana could get, I am all here for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony this morning. Next on the list is Deja Bass.
Half a day and good morning, Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Deja Bass. I am a 15-year-old incoming sophomore at North Chur Dame High School. Although I am not a licensed driver, I sit here in support of Bill 290 authored by Senator Moynihan. Even despite being unable to legally drive, I feel, I hear, and I see the hardships the increases of gas has caused to many. As of late, I find myself turning down trips to the mall to hang out with my friends or asking for random shopping trips to my favorite clothing stores, even asking to eat out at my favorite restaurants, because I feel selfish about wanting to unnecessarily spend my parents' money. Now I worry about how much more it'll cost them to have to not only spare me money to spend at my favorite locations, but to even get me there. As a teenager, I am often surfing social media. I read through local news articles and sometimes read into comments from the community about how difficult life is becoming. It's a hard pill to swallow. I'm 15. Am I really supposed to worry about how hard life will be when I grow up? I may not fully understand what's happening today, but I knew, I do know that there are many struggling families on Guam. My only hope today is that my little voice here will make a difference, even if it's just for some temporary relief for my cousins, my friends, and all other teens whose families are finding it difficult to get by. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you for your testimony this morning. BBMR Director, Mr. Lester Carlson.
Good morning, Senators. Thank you very much for the participation of the two young ladies. That was very, very nice. Thank you. I have a comment to start. The fiscal note for Bill 290, which we did submit April 20th, it came to my attention last week that I needed to revisit the fiscal impact, and I reached out to Reven Tax to ask whether or not they calculated the fiscal impact at the full 5% or just 3%. Calling into everybody's memory, the pledge we have of 3% of the BBT for our BBT bonds. So I conferred with Director Shimizu yesterday, and I think she's going to have some numbers that reflect a 2% reduction, because we can't go below the 3% because it's pledged to the bonds. Other than that, I think maybe it's time for Ms. Shimizu to clarify this fiscal impact.
Half a day. And thank you so much, Senator Rogel. For the record, I'm Daphne Shimizu, and the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Hold on. Please excuse me. I've been a little bit under the weather, so I'm wearing my mask, but I'll take it off. With regards to the fiscal note, as indicated by Director Carlson from BBMR, when we did the fiscal note, we did not take into consideration the 3% that is pledged for our bond, per our bond covenants. And so I wanted to kind of go through that and give you just the figures, so that that way you'll have it. I first wanted to kind of clarify how it was calculated, how we came up with the figure, and then, of course, just go ahead and calculate how much, calculate the 40% of the total that would actually be what we expect to be the estimate. And so back in February '25, Senator Sinagastin had requested for the Department of Revenue and Taxation to provide some information on how much, how many gallons and what the LFT amounts were that were paid by the various wholesalers for fuel. And so what we did was we took the, I believe it's the Form GRT-2, where our wholesalers do report the amount of LFT, again, which is the wholesale, the tax on the wholesalers for fuel. And what we did was, because, of course, they don't actually report to us the total number of gallons, we utilized what we know is the rates, the various rates. We know gasoline and diesel have, are, the basis, 14 and 15%, respectively, and each of them have 4 cent or 4% surcharges on top of the 14 and 15%. So for gasoline, we get charged 19 cents per gallon, and then for diesel fuel, it is 18 cents per gallon. It's the 14 and 15 cents plus the 4 cents. And so based on how, how much, the dollar figure that was indicated or reported by the various wholesalers, we utilize that to calculate the number of gallons that are transferred or considered sold by the wholesalers to the retailers. Based on the number of gallons that we got from that calculation, again, which was provided to Senator Sinagastin and I think further utilized for Bill 295-36 as fiscal note, then we utilize that information to calculate the BBT impact for the fuel on the retailers, just to share as well some insight on how the retailers report their retail sales. You know, at the retail, generally, when we go to gas stations, we notice they have like a food mart, and they have different retail items they sell. They may sell toilet paper, food, so there are other items that are not fuel that are sold. And so with regards to the BBT that's paid by the gas stations, the retail side, the retail line includes not just fuel, but it also includes all other items that are sold at their gas station. So instead of utilizing that data, what we did was we utilized the number of gallons that is basically sold from the wholesaler to the retailer as the basis for coming up with an estimate for the BBT that is paid on fuel only. And so we're trying to exclude anything else that's being sold at the gas stations. And from there, so once we came up with a total number of gallons, we went back the last two years, and we had to make a few assumptions, right? We know that the BBT is going to be based on the number of gallons sold times the price per gallon at the pump. And so we made a couple of assumptions when we were trying to go through this process. One, we tried to, you know, we don't know, or we cannot predict what the price of fuel is going to be over the next two years. So we did a calculation based on no increases over the next two years of, on the price of gasoline. And when we did that, our estimate was between 10.9 million to 13.7 million, but that is the full 5%. So at 40%, which is two-fifths of that, right, two-fifths of the full 5% BBT, that comes up to 4.4 to 5.5 million per year. And again, that's assuming no increases beyond, I believe that we, the base, the base was as of April 2022. What we also did was we went back over the last two years to determine what we saw as a trend in the increase in fuel over the last two years, starting with May 2020. And we based it, we didn't have the full historical increases or decreases for both premium and regular gasoline. So based on the various like news articles, you know, which actually track them, we looked at what the increases were from, I believe it's May 2020, to approximately like February or April 2022. And in the first year, from May 2020 to about April, around the same time, 2021, we saw a 41% increase in fuel, the price of fuel at the pump. And we utilized that 41%, which again was really for regular gas only. And we applied it to, because we couldn't pull out what is premium versus what is regular fuel. We also couldn't pull out what was diesel only. So we applied that 41% to the, again, to the number of gallons that we had seen was transferred from, in 2019 and 2021. And we use 2019 and 2021, because 2019, we believe to be a more full year in terms of the data that we have in our system. And 2021 is more recent, but we believe we were still, at the time, we were reviewing this information, that likely our team was still probably processing some of the returns. And so again, we tried to utilize that as our basis. So the next year, which was 2021 to 2022, we saw another 41% increase from 2021 to 2022, early 2022, in the price of fuel overall. And that takes into consideration if there was any decreases or whatever. So basically taking May 2020 and a point in 2021, and then, I believe, around the same time, early to mid 2021, based, sorry, and compared it with, I believe it was around February to March, maybe 2022. So overall, over a two-year period, we saw that the price of fuel increased by 82% from May 2020 till about February, maybe, or March 2022. And so what we did was take those, the same information on the number of gallons of fuel that were sold and applied that increase, and then also the price that we saw in 2020, 20, and we, sorry, the price that we saw, I think, around April, and we applied the increase of 41% so that that was what we used as the basis for the 2023 impact, and then applied again the other 41%, because we saw a total of 82% over two years, to the second year. And based on that, if you'll notice in the fiscal note, it states year one would be about 15.4 to 19.3 million, but that, of course, is the full 5%. So for year one, at 40%, which is 2% of the 5, right, one, two, four, sorry, 40%, two fifths of the 5%, it's 6.2 to 7.7 million is the estimate for the first year. And for the second year, although again, it states 19.9 to 25 million, this is, 40% is 8 million to about 10 million. And again, you know, we don't know what the price of fuel is going to be. We're making our best gas estimate based on the trends that we saw in terms of the increase in fuel, and we're basing it on what the cost of fuel is at this point. So there was a lot of assumptions that were made, but that was what we came up with. And so if we, hold on just a second. If we, if we make the assumption that there will be no increases in the price of fuel over the next two years, then, hold on just a second, then that will result in a total two-year impact of about 8.75 to 11 million over two years. And that's assuming no increases. If we make the assumption that the trend in the increase in the costs, or, sorry, the price of fuel, and this is at the pump, because that is what is, what BBT is based on, then we'll, it's about, it's over 14, about 14.1 million to about 17.7 million over two years. And again, you know, this is making a lot of assumptions about what we're going to see in the increase of fuel. I don't know that we're seeing a decrease in fuel at this point. And then that's something that's happening, I think, around the nation and probably around the world. So again, to clarify, for, if, assuming no increases, about 8.7 to about 11 million for, overall, for two years, if there's no increase in fuel, and then again, 14.1 million to 17.7 million over two years, if the trend in the increase of fuel, again, follows what we saw over the last two years, which is 41% a year. Okay? Oh, so the other thing, what we, we had indicated as well, of course, I want to make sure we point out administrative fees, and we did indicate here that there would be administrative fees associated with this. I think that that is something, you know, of course, we have had multiple bills that have, and some that have become law already, that impact our BBT group. So we wanted to make sure that we address the issue of administrative costs, and that is included in the bill. And the last piece, which I wanted to as well address, was the visible GRT. And I know that's something that has been brought up, and I guess the main concern that we have about the visible GRT is how that will be addressed by our retailers. In particular, of course, our small retailers like our mom-and-pop stores. You know, I don't know how difficult or easy it would be for them, but of course, there is a concern that for, in terms of implementation, that may be a little challenging for some of our stores, who may not have the, the technical capability at this time to be able to have the GRT visible. So, you know, again, I don't know if that's something that in terms of the body, they may want to consider or phase in, or, you know, maybe if you, I haven't talked with the mom-and-pop stores, but again, I mean, you can imagine that it is challenging for them to make, some of them just use those, the off-the-shelf registers that may not necessarily have the capability of having adjustments or making adjustments on the little receipts. So again, that might be something that might be challenging, and wanted to also point that out for the body. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Director Shimizu. DOA Director Edward Byrne.
Good morning, Senators. Thank you for inviting us here today. I really just have two major, you know, things to say. I think this is possibly the fourth time during my life that we've seen a fuel crisis. Sometimes it was a supply crisis, sometimes it was a price crisis, and the moment we're dealing with a price crisis. As Director Carlson said, our first and biggest and most urgent priority at DOA every month is to pay the debt service on the bonds. And I'm pleased to say that, as far as I can recall, and as far as the staff, in particular, at the Department of Accounting, we have never missed a debt service payment on any of our bonds, and certainly, we're all very proud of that. BBT is a, I would say, a reliable source of revenue. We are responsible for cash planning and cash execution. We rely upon, obviously, our own forecasts, as well as BBMR forecasts, to be able to determine the amount of cash that's coming in so that we can accurately plan for the amount of cash that's going out, something that we've been able to do pretty successfully over the last three years. BBT is a source of revenue which is reliable. It generally doesn't deviate much from month to month. So it's a source of revenue that we can rely on for our cash planning. So obviously, from a cash planning point of view, any disruption to that reliable source of revenue or any change in that reliable source of revenue causes us to have to reconsider our cash plans and may result in temporarily having to defer payments, because you're looking at it on a, on a year-on-year basis, but DOA has to look at it on a day-by-day basis. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Director Byrne. Allow me to recognize Senator Joanne Brown, who was with us this morning as well. With that, we will now open up to the panel for questions, beginning with Speaker Terlaughie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel for your testimony this morning. Thank you for, to the intern. Are you also an intern with Senator Moynihan as well?
No, I actually work at the Guam Museum.
Okay, great. Welcome, and thank you for your testimony and highlighting the actual impacts this has on, that, that rising fuel prices are having on families, right, and individuals, young people, old people, all of us on Guam. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
And so my questions are, so Daphne, you're, you're adding this, I'm sorry, Director Shimizu, you're adding this morning testimony that the BBMR fiscal note, the impacts, should be calculated at 40%, well, if they were calculated at 40% of your totals. So I just want to confirm, for the estimated annual impact, not, you said 8.75 to 11 million, right? Instead of 15.4 to 19.3, if we use the 40% figure.
So I'm making the assumption that the amount that's pledged for bonds is the full 3%, right?
Right. We'll talk about that later.
Right.
I just want to know your numbers.
And so, so what would be left is going to be the 2%. So 2 divided by 5 is 40%, right? And so from there, again, the, if you look at the fiscal note, then that is the full 5%. What the true fiscal impact would be, would be the 2% only, which is 40%. And so if you take 2%, sorry, 40% of the 10.9 to 13.7, you get about approximately 4.4 to 5.5 million per year.
How much?
If you look at A, if you're, if you're reviewing the fiscal note for Bill 290-36.
Oh, A, okay, A.
So 40% of 10.9 is about 4.4 million. But this is, again, for a single year, ma'am. And then 40% of 13.7 is about 5.5. It's like 5.48 million, but I'm just rounding.
Okay, so yeah, so the number for A would be 4.4 to 5.4. The number for B1 would be 8.75 to 11?
For B1 would be 6.2 to 7.7.
7.7. And the number for 2, B2?
Would be 7.96 to 9.98 million.
7.96 to what, sorry?
9.98.
9.98.
So about 8 million to 10 million.
All right.
But the, with regards to A, that's only the, a single-year impact. So you'll, in order to get the two-year impact, you'll have to multiply that by 2, which comes out to about 8.75 to 10.97 million.
Okay. For one year only, per year, per year, okay.
So that's the two-year.
All right. Well, thank you for those calculations. The, the, the main question, I guess, on the bill is, as it's written, is, is this bill prohibited by the bond covenants? Could you please put that on the record, your answers? Mr. Carlson?
Okay, I will restate for the record that this is, this, as written, eliminating the entire 5%, would be a violation of the bond covenants. We can go down 2% as Director Shimizu mentioned, but we can't go beyond the 3%.
Okay. Well, the bill is not advocating for a reduction. It's advocating for an exemption to the tax altogether, an exemption to the BBT, so, yeah.
It's the same thing, ma'am.
What do you mean?
We, we cannot impair the revenue source below.
I know that, but what I'm saying is, I don't know where you're getting the proposal to change 5 to 3. It's, nowhere in this bill is there any language like that. It's an all-out exemption on the entire BPT amount, meaning it doesn't propose any reduction, it proposes an exemption. That's all. I'm not arguing with your, your statement that it's a violation of the bond covenant.
It would violate bond covenants.
Okay, yeah, that's what I want to make very clear. So it's actually a whole other proposal to, let's reduce BPT amounts, right? Anyways, maybe that's rhetorical, that's semantics, but if there are, we've already reduced BPT for all companies from 5 to 3, for all companies within a specific category. And I think the last time, Director Shimizu, you testified that, I thought it was 90%, but I've been hearing the governor say 87%. But around those numbers, 87% of all businesses are now only paying 3% in BPT, and they're no longer paying 5%. Is that correct?
So what we, with regards to that, you know, the limited exemption for certain small businesses, which is basically like an enhanced Dave Santos, that was adjusted. I think the original happened in 2020, then I guess in 2021, and then now we have, whatever change was made by the body, I think in 2021 became permanent. And then it was subsequently increased, so that what, what it is, is for, for a business, or for a business, a GRT payer, who makes less than 500,000, then the full 500,000 is exempt from the 2%. And when we looked at information, I think it was, like, maybe a while ago, I know, I mean, we need to go back and probably review the information once more to see, but I believe that about a while ago, again, and I can reprovide the information that I had sent, I think it was 85% of companies at the time, that we, when we did the 250 and 5 instead of the 5 and 5. And I think that when we moved it to the 500 and 500 thresholds, then it became maybe 90, but I, I will have to check that.
So 89 or 90% is still accurate? Because we did increase those numbers. You're making it sound like that's still in debate, but that's all done, right?
Right. Those were based on historical figures, and I can't, I had provided that to the body a while ago, and I can, for another bill, I can go back and look and reprovide it as well.
Okay, yeah. Well, I remember, it was, I think it was 90%. So maybe you're saying 89. That's fine. But my question is, I just want to, yes or no, is it true then that 89% of companies on Guam are paying only 3% in business privilege tax, as opposed to 5%?
That was our estimate, yes.
All right. So does this bill impact companies who are paying 5%? I mean, are there, if these companies that this bill will impact are paying 5% and not 3%, why is that?
So this, again, there were many assumptions made when we did the fiscal note, and one of the assumptions was that all of the companies that are reporting actually make over 500,000. So we did not go back and take out any of the companies who were, maybe have made less than 500. Those are not, those not what we did. We assumed that they all would make more than 500,000 and not be exempt, or not have the exemption for the 2.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know. So this is an assumption, not necessarily a confirmed answer?
Correct.
That the companies that might be impacted by this bill are paying 5% and not 3% because they are making over 500,000 a year?
Right. And, and again, as well, it is difficult to tell at any time what or how much a company is going to make. And so we did use that, and that is an assumption, that all of the companies that pay BPT on fuel sales actually pay the 5%. So with regards, again, even if we have historical data on various companies, it's difficult to tell how much a company is going to make in the future, right? And so we did make the assumption that the 5, that all of the companies, again, that pay BPT on fuel, that they make over $500,000. And so we did not go back and extract, or try to extrapolate, the numbers of companies that may have been less than 5, may have had less than 500,000.
Do you believe that is a reasonable assumption that all the companies affected, I mean, by this bill? In other words, that all retailers of fuel are making over 500,000?
Well, I can't say for certain, but, you know, I do believe it's, I do believe it's reasonable. Perhaps, maybe, some may be of the opinion it might be a little conservative. But again, you know, it's difficult to tell how, I mean, I think especially with the increase in the price of fuel. And, you know, again, as we saw over the last two years, what we saw was...
But are you, I'm asking if it's reasonable. Yes?
I mean, I believe we, I believe, from our perspective, again, we may, you know, be considered as taking a conservative approach, but we believe it's reasonable, ma'am.
And would you be able, if the bill is passed, or when we get on the floor, to discuss it, to tell us for sure whether, I mean, it looks likely for these companies?
I mean, what we can do is we always, all we have is historical data, so we can go back and at least review some of them, but, so that that way we can advise the body. But, you know, again, we believe that the approach we took was appropriate in terms of working to calculate the amount for the body.
Okay. And, and it's because the, the way the bill's worded, it talks about, it's an exemption, right? It exempts retail sales of liquid fuels from the BPT. And I wanted to see how this works, together with those who might already be taxed only at the reduced levels, right? But you're saying that it's reasonable to assume that there are no liquid, retail liquid fuels companies that are taxed at the reduced level, so we're talking about a 5% reduction if this bill passed as is, right?
Right.
As opposed to that 3, a reduction to 3%. And you're saying that violates bond covenants? To be, to remove 5%, to be consistent with bond covenants, we'd have to keep, we'd have to continue to charge 3% to these companies?
My understanding is that the bond covenant is for the first 3% of BPT, and so...
Sorry?
The, the, my understanding, and excuse me if my voice is a little bit low, my understanding is that the bond covenant prevents the first 3% of BPT from being, because it's pledged. But again, I would have to defer to the BBMR Director on that matter.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna assume he's gonna say, he's gonna repeat himself, but at the risk of repeating yourself, Mr. Carlson, just confirm yes or no to that, please?
Did you want to finish your sentence? Confirm yes or no that?
Oh, that, that... That the way the bill's written, it's to exempt liquid, retail liquid fuels companies, to exempt them from 5%, and that not, well, and that that would be a violation of the bond covenant, I guess?
That would be a violation, yes.
All right. If there, but, Daphne, the statute also provides for other exemptions of, of BPT on liquid fuels. And I wanted to know if there are other companies who are exempt from liquid fuels right now, who are making over 500,000 a year? And these are exempt from the entire 5%, right? So this is before you entered into that, or the government entered into the more recent bond covenants, where we pledged a 3%, that this exemption, these exemptions were in place. So are there any of the companies who are exempt from paying any BPT, are any of those making over 500,000 a year?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last portions.
Are any of those making over 500,000 a year? Any of those companies exempt from BPT by statute?
Are they making over 5, are they paying the full 5?
No. Are they make, do they, is their income over 500,000 a year?
Again, I don't, I don't, I didn't pull that actual data, but we did, in our calculation, make that assumption, that they are all subject to the 5%, which is, again, if you make over 500,000. So I didn't pull that, we did not pull that actual data, Madam Speaker.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not sure you understand this question, but I'm gonna just repeat it, and maybe I said it wrong. So if we add liquid fuels tax companies as part of the statute, where we list all the companies that are exempt from BPT, for example, the government's exempt from BPT, nonprofits, right, religious charitable organizations are exempt, wholesalers are exempt. And so the bill proposes to add liquid fuels retailers to this list, right, for a period of two years. What, so I wanted to know, and the liquid, and you've established that liquid fuels retailers are making over 500,000 a year, and that's why they're not, their taxes are not already reduced to 3%. And what other of these exempt industries or companies also make over 500,000 a year?
Of all of those categories that you're stating?
Yes.
I, I don't have that information, Madam Speaker.
I don't see anything in, in the fiscal note, well, that indicates whether this is going to impact agencies, or whether the government would need to do anything to cover the agencies that are currently being funded by these sources. Let me just look at the effective date of the bill is... Effective immediately upon enactment, I guess, for a period of two years. So if these amounts are reduced, let's say, 30 days from now, if this bill becomes law, would this impact the, the appropriations of any agencies?
Not for fiscal year '22, because of the collections over the adopted level, even though we do have to be mindful of the LEAP Act, which isn't reflected in the budget, but it has been implemented, and that was $25 million. I don't, that came from the general fund, not specifically from BPT, so we're okay for '22, but we would have to rethink the governor's submission on revenues estimated for fiscal year '23. So I think we're safe for '22, and '23 is going to be discussed in the coming months. So it's just gonna have to be incorporated into the revenue projections at that time.
All right. Well, that's great testimony, and I'm very surprised, though, because when it was for Bill 295, you said the opposite. You said that reducing the taxes in the current fiscal year was going to have great impact on these agencies, and that we weren't automatically going to be able to use the additional revenues during FY '22 to cover those. So are you in support of this bill?
No.
Are you, Mr. Byrne?
No, ma'am.
Can I ask why?
From my perspective, ma'am, we have a public hearing tomorrow on Simon Sanchez High School. I've, I've been very consistent, and I think, to clarify, I, I think what I said for Bill 295 was not to include GRTA. I think that's about the extent of my comments for Bill 295. But regardless, we have additional road construction that needs to be done. The body is very cognizant about secondary and tertiary roads, which are not funded with federal money. The cost for Simon Sanchez has been publicly estimated at $120 million. And that, I think, public expectation of that effort moving forward is, is very palatable. So we do have needs, great needs, and just because we have a situation where revenues are over adopted levels, we shouldn't just automatically cut the tree down, we should grow more trees. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Byrne?
Madam Speaker, I already expressed my views with regard to cash flow, and the effect of, I guess, unsettling influences on, on revenue collections, on, on the cash flow. The governor has put forward a number of proposals, which I'm sure we will bring to fruition. Indeed, Program Salapi 3 is already underway. On Monday, we had something over 800 online applications, and about 80 hard copy applications. So there are a number of proposals for helping those, and those who are particularly suffering as a result of rising prices from gas and from other, from other commodities. So they're already in the process of being supported. So for those two reasons, I don't support this.
Thank you. So, Mr. Carlson, the Simon Sanchez construction does not have a dedicated funding source yet?
No, ma'am, and that'll be a topic for tomorrow's discussion. And I think that bearing that in mind, and the reduction for two years in the BPT, it's gonna take a couple years, three years to build the school. Maybe there's some compromise, but we, we need to be very certain about what it is that we have as far as operating revenues for the government of Guam moving forward. And if I may, I would like to clarify one more thing. Your statement about my statement for 295, that was regarding the Guam Highway Fund. So it had nothing to do with BPT.
Liquid fuels tax.
It had nothing to do with BPT for the liquid fuel tax and the general fund. So my, again, my statement was, if you're going to take $5 million from the general fund and give that to DPW, because you're gonna remove liquid fuel tax funding, which is part of their operation, you, you made them okay. But, you know, the diesel surcharge is what funds the Public Service Transit Fund, Public Transit Service Fund.
Right. But the bill only discussed reducing the liquid fuels tax. It did not discuss any of the appropriations, just like this bill reduces general fund revenue, does not designate which appropriations funded by that exact general fund revenue are going to be decreased. And, and I agree with you, that we can reasonably cover these general fund revenues with our excess collections. When the Simon Sanchez construction was authorized, it had already proceeded to an award back then, I think, or at least a bid, or, sorry, an RFP when it was under DPW, before it got transferred to GDOE to redo the procurement. So I don't think they could have got that far without a funding source, and I thought the, the law dedicates where those funds were going to come from. And it was not, I don't recall it being, BPT.
You're right, but the funding for the lease came from the GEFF. We don't have a lease. So the A&E and everything has been funded by appropriations to DOE for Simon Sanchez A&E work.
Right. But in the end, are we going to have a lease?
Oh, we will, yes.
Right. And that will be funded with TEFF? And that will be funded with TEFF?
I believe when we talk about this tomorrow, you'll see that it's going to be insufficient.
Insufficient? Not enough? So the governor's proposing to fund Simon Sanchez with BPT?
The governor's bill, the governor didn't author the bill for tomorrow.
Right. But, okay, yeah, well, I'm just trying, we're trying to see whether we can afford the impact on the BPT. So I have not heard of any proposal by the governor to use BPT for Simon Sanchez either. That's why I'm asking. If you're saying we can't use BPT in this regard because it's needed for Simon Sanchez, that's the first I'm hearing about that, and I want to clarify.
I had an expanded answer, ma'am. I said roadways, schools. I didn't say specifically Simon Sanchez. I said we have a broad and growing need for infrastructure to support, you know, Guam's operations, both business and public. That's what I said.
Okay, and you did say specifically Simon Sanchez and roads, yes. But that's where I got the idea. I didn't make that up. I'm hearing it from you, and I'm trying to clarify, yeah, what the impact of that is on whether we're able to do this bill or not. So, Daphne, again, the companies that are already exempt from BPT include the government, the U.S. government, local governments, life insurance, wholesalers. And, you know, those are the ones that I'm thinking make over $500,000 a year. But the rest are like nonprofits or chambers of commerce, right? They're like organizations, so I'm kind of guessing that those do not make that much in a year, but... I don't know. Yeah, so this is only for a two-year period, and I guess I'm just trying to see how to compare this type of company from being exempt from BPT versus these other companies who are exempt from BPT, and whether there's some kind of rationale that makes them similar, right? Or that they should be as a policy exempt from BPT. All right. Okay, well, and I guess I'm going to suggest that if we're going to use different numbers, if you could send this to us in writing, or send an amended fiscal note that says if not, whatever you're saying this morning, that if not to violate the bond covenant, that using this fiscal note, or, you know, using this bill as is, the fiscal note shows the monetary impact, but it's actually, we would not, you would not be able to do that at all. You would not be able to implement this because it would be a violation of the bond covenant. And that the most that we could do is reduce it to 3% for these companies as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And then what those numbers would be, yeah. All right, thank you.
I will.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, allow me to also recognize Senator Sabina Pairs. Senator Pairs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So did you calculate what this would, how this would affect the average consumer with the reduction of BPT?
No, we just calculated what the potential impact on BPT would be, ma'am.
And anybody in the panel, is there any way to calculate that? I mean, considering that some of the, there's a lot of assumptions being made, and potentially it could be just status quo, is that one of the outcomes of this if the prices continue to rise as far as the price of gasoline for the average consumer?
So, to clarify, with regards to even just the original fiscal note, what we did was, we, well, what we did is we worked to calculate the impact. We looked back in the last two years to see what the trend was in terms of the increase in the price of fuel at the pump. And based on that, we, again, you know, we utilized that trend to, you know, look forward. And so we, our first calculation, if you look at the fiscal note, which is item A, makes the assumption that there will be no increases in, that there'll be no increases in, sorry, in the price of fuel at the pump over the next two years. And then item B, there's B1 and 2, makes the assumption that what we saw in the trend in the increase of price of fuel over the last two years would follow. So we utilized the 41% per year over the last two years, and we utilized that to project out how much BPT would be impacted over the next two years. Now, with regards to calculating, I know we do have some data on how many vehicles that there are that are registered, and, you know, of course, we could come up with some type of estimate. But again, you know, it's kind of difficult to tell. Some people may drive more than other, you know, and the average person. Of course, there are, and again, I can't tell how many, I don't know that from our data we can tell how many are diesel versus regular fuel vehicles. We can make assumptions again, but how we did this was we did it based on really the best information we had and tried to take into consideration the larger factors that we thought would impact the total BPT.
Okay, thank you for the response. I know in some of the testimony provided here by the retailers, they recommend that the BPT be listed on the receipts, so as a way to determine how much is going towards BPT. Are you in support of that?
With regards to visible GRT, the one main thing that I brought up is I was just not sure if everyone is ready to go ahead and have the visible GRT, if some of the smaller, maybe retailers are not capable of doing it right away or not. And I don't know if, as the discussion with the retailers was, had, maybe your discussions was ongoing, if that was brought up by them as a concern. But that would be, again, if this is implemented right away, if this passes, then, you know, of course, that would be a concern because compliance would be an issue. And so again, that was something that we just wanted to point out a little bit earlier.
So I know, you know, the high cost of living is one of the big issues here in Guam, and that goes towards gasoline. So are there any policies that you would recommend, I guess this goes to anybody in the panel, to address, you know, the increase in prices? I know shipping is one of the big things, you know, the scale of economies is another issue here. But what is one potential offering that you can provide as far as policies in regards to a reduction of oil cost here? If there's anything that you can provide for anybody on the panel in your experiences, not just here on Guam, but other places as well?
Ma'am, I just think that would be very difficult to tell. I think that in the discussion on Bill 29536, that we did have Department of Labor's economist who talked a little bit about the price, the cost of living and inflation, and perhaps maybe from an economist's perspective, that might be simply a place to start. But it's really difficult, I think, you know, to say.
Yeah, because I know this is one of, you know, the problem with Ukraine and, you know, how it's costing, there's a downward effect, a cascading effect here on Guam when it comes to fuel prices. And so, of course, we don't have control over these external factors, but what can we do here on Guam? Obviously, we're trying our best here in the legislature to come up with different policy solutions. So I know we're going to be here in the afternoon for another one. So anyway, thank you for your responses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Pairs. I have a few questions for the panel. First one is just to clarify something I know you kind of spoke about a little bit earlier, but I just wanted to be crystal clear that any wholesalers of liquid fuel are already exempt from BPT. Is that correct?
The wholesalers for liquid fuel, there was Bill 29536, which I was, I believe, was already signed into law, and that, I think, was that signed into law? And that had a six-month, it was a six-month removal of not paying. But there are other LFT exemptions. But again, LFT is taxed at the wholesaler level, right? And what we're talking about today is the retailer level. So from, at the wholesaler level, there is going to be a six-month, I guess, tax break is what I understand if Bill 29536 was already signed into law. But there are exemptions for the LFT. There are exemptions for transshipment. So if they bring it into Guam, but then they further send it off to Saipan or Palau, then those are not subject to LFT.
Well, I'm asking about BPT specifically.
Yeah. So then with regards to BPT, which is at the retailer level, again, there's no, I don't believe there's anything specific.
So a wholesaler of liquid fuel does not pay BPT? As a wholesaler, they're exempt, right?
Right. Wholesalers are exempt from BPT, but wholesalers, like, there are certain wholesalers who pay certain taxes. For example, there's alcohol tax, there's some of the cigarettes, there's cigarette taxes, right? So there are wholesalers that do pay certain taxes, but they are not, they are exempt from BPT.
Yeah, that was my question. So any wholesaler of liquid fuel, while they do have a liquid fuel tax, that's taxed at the wholesaler level, as a wholesaler, wholesalers are exempt from BPTs, right?
Correct.
So any wholesaler of liquid fuels are already exempt from BPTs. However, this bill is looking at whether or not we should further exempt retailers of liquid fuel.
Correct.
So what I'm getting at here is there's already a huge level of exemption at the wholesale level. They already don't pay BPTs. Now it gets to the retail level, and this bill is seeking to eliminate BPTs at the retail level. Correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure. In addition to that, my next question is, I'm not sure if anyone on the panel can answer it. I will state for the record that the committee did reach out to ExxonMobil, South Pacific Petroleum Corporation, and IPNE Holdings. ExxonMobil and IPNE Holdings both responded with written testimony. South Pacific Petroleum Corporation did not provide any written testimony and did not confirm whether or not they would be in attendance at today's hearing. With that, the question I have, I'm not sure if anyone on the panel can answer it, but perhaps Director Shimizu, if you're aware of the information or privy to any of the information via revenue tax. My question is, I was recently told that most or a majority of the companies on Guam that sell retail gasoline are also the same companies that bring it in and sell it at wholesale.
Senator Rajaal, I couldn't tell you for sure. My understanding is that there are some that may also be either affiliated or maybe are able to do retail, but I couldn't tell you for sure. I don't have that information.
Is that something we would be able to ask of you to determine whether or not it's the same company that is bringing in the gas, same company that is a wholesaler, and then they in turn sell it to their retail company, which is a subsidiary of the wholesale company, for example?
That's something we can look into in order to be able to provide the body if that's something that is needed.
That's, I would like to make that formal request today. And how many, my understanding is that a majority of them are. There are a few, as they say, mom-and-pop gas stations, but my understanding is they're becoming fewer and fewer, and my understanding is that more and more of the gas stations are essentially corporate-owned. So I just would like to determine which ones are, how many are truly mom-and-pop, that they own the gas station, it's a mom-and-pop function, they buy the gas from the wholesaler, and then they sell it at retail, versus how many are now owned essentially by the corporation or by the wholesaler, and then the retail location is just a subsidiary company of the wholesaler or something to that effect.
May I suggest that the committee also reach out to the three companies and ask the same question? Because I also believe that you're correct, that they're all one and the same. The franchising or of gas station operations, I think, has, for all intents and purposes, phased out, so, but I would encourage the committee to ask, because I think you're right.
Okay, thank you. We will ask as well, and then if you could also look on your end and see if you're able to obtain that information as well. Thank you. I have no further questions. Excuse me, I do. Yes, I'll allow Madam Speaker to follow up on that question.
Yes, so in answering that, if you could also just look at the 11GCA, the BPT exemptions statute, 26203, and under subsection 8, it talks about a distributor, amounts received by a distributor from the sale of liquid fuel when the tax levied by Article 4, which is the LFT, has been paid. So they're saying distributors are exempt, and I want to know if that's the same as what we're discussing as a wholesaler. And, but then it specifically says, yeah, this exemption shall not apply to the retailer. Yeah, so just clarify that distributor term versus the wholesaler term that you just testified about. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I may have missed it earlier, forgive me if I did, but was there also an estimate of how much, if the BPT was exempt at the retail level, how much that could potentially provide in savings on the retail to the customer?
No, so we didn't go, we didn't take that step to try to determine how much per individual or how much per, I guess, individual who was fueling it. No, we didn't have that.
Well, at least per gallon, I guess. Is there a way that someone could determine that, what an estimated savings per gallon could be if the BPT were exempt?
I believe we could try to go back and review that. But perhaps if it's in writing, it may help so that we will be exactly, will exactly understand.
Okay, we'll ask the committee, I guess, to submit those questions in writing to yourself.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Senator Rajaal.
All right, I have no further questions at this time. I will allow the sponsor of the bill to ask his questions and also deliver his closing statement. Senator Moynihan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleagues. Interesting discussion, and I appreciate the directors here today to further explain to us. After that director, that was really helpful. I wish he were my math teacher when I was in school. I'd probably understand a lot more. For these interns here, I appreciate what the discussion you had. Jaden Rose, you were talking about your nana, right? And her taking you, and is there more people in the car that she takes every day? Give me a little clarification on that, your story.
So I actually have three younger siblings that also have summer camp, and that's really far away from where we live, so we had to drive them all the way down, then come back to drop myself. So there's three of us, actually, there's four of us in total, but we still have to drive everyone back and forth in the car.
You go to different locations, or is this the same?
Different locations. It's pretty far, somewhere in Manila and all the way back to Huganya here.
You're talking round trip or one-way?
It depends on the traffic. Recently, we haven't gone roundway, but we've been...
Actually, what I'm asking is, she dropped you and your siblings off at different locations, and then is she the same person that picks you up and brings you home?
Yes, that is what happens a lot.
Okay. Three of you, continues, and how often is this? Is this...
Actually, every day. She's always the one who drives us around and picks us up.
You're explaining you go to the gas station how often then?
Well, on her paydays, we go there like almost every other week of her payday. But sometimes, since if the week was very busy, we would have to go there just the week she had gassed it.
Would you know if she tells the gas attendant to fill them up, or...
Yes, she always does try to fill it all the way full tank, so she doesn't have to worry about it much later on.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Deja, you were explaining how things were previously, I guess, of what you would like to do and how your family goes around and takes some drives. How was it before this situation? What would you guys normally do?
So my family and I, actually, we enjoy going, being on the road. But with these gas prices, it is difficult to go places that we used to go to, like we were always going around the island. We would have no problem going down to Maritza and driving all the way down south or going all the way up north. But like I said, the gas prices are very high, so we have to take it into consideration that if we want to go to places like Maritza, go down and see, like to the Maritza Pier, it would take gas. like Maritza, go down and see, like, to the Maritza Pier, it would take gas, and it's not something that we're willing to do anymore because it is expensive.
Thank you again for your clarification, and I appreciate you, your courage to come before us and give a nice story. It's very helpful, I think, for my colleagues to appreciate where you're coming from and how you're seeing your family affected by the, by the cost of fuel. Of course, we want to do our best, and possibly, if this bill, as you can hear and you stated all the way through the testimony, could be adjusted in committee, may not be 5%, maybe 2%, but we're, I think, on Guam, we're all used to seeing, when we hear the price of fuel going to go up, there's a line in front of the gas station, right? We want to, we want to get it at, if it's 2 cents lower, if it's 5 cents lower, we want to get to be able to fill it up, and if it's dropping, then we want to, the same thing we want to do there. So, if there's any compromise that could be made on this bill, the whole idea is to try to give additional relief at the pump. So, hopefully, we can move that forward, but I thank you both for your testimonies.
Thank you.
And for our directors, you guys are a great team. Of course, we want to always protect the BBT because we know that's our funding to provide the government services, and I understand the governor's, Adelut's plans and where they wish to focus this revenue that we have, and it's well protected by your statements, and I appreciate that. But we also, as, as the House of the People, we have our ideas to promote too, and I think what you're offering and what you're suggesting with the 40%, pointing that out in the fiscal note, could be some differences of moving this bill forward or not, but I, anything's, anything's possible. When a bill is introduced, there's always opportunity to make adjustments. There's nothing to say it must go in this direction, but it's something that if we can move forward and compromise, I think, especially what these young folks are saying, it could help get them to Maritza, or it could help, you know, take the kids around to their summer camps, something, every little bit helps. So, as for BBT and how it's used by the stations, we know this is just passed directly on to the consumers, and if we can provide a savings, then that's reflective, so we can see that savings will be passed on to the consumers. The BBT is not profitable for the companies. It's basically a pass-through from the stations on to the government. So, we would hope that the price of fuel does come down, but in the meantime, I think, as we passed the last bill, when the governor signed into law, that's one measure, and I'm looking at this to be another support for the consumers at the pump. So, with that, I really appreciate the further explanations, and I appreciate our interns here today, and I want to thank my colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Okay, if there are no further questions from any of the, of my colleagues, Bill Number 290-36 LS is duly heard by the committee. I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, for providing your feedback and your suggestions and your testimony. The public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 10:16 a.m. Sitzuismasi.